All right, so the recording started.
Yeah, yeah, we'll start. Okay, it's 7:00 PM, May 6th, or not May, June 16th, 2025, City Hall, 140 Main Street, Torrenton, Connecticut. Time to call the City of Torrenton and the Wetlands Commission to order. Serving on the mission this evening are members Christine Altman, Joe Paganini, myself, Jay Bate. Wait a minute. Should I announce?
A present but not.
And Adrian Barb is present but not serving. Also present is Nate Marty Cyrus, Inland Wetlands Enforcement Officer and Assistant City Planner. And I don't know if I mentioned it. Myself, Jay Bate. Next. Minutes for approval for the May 6th, 2025 regular meeting.
I move that we accept the minutes.
My second. And a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Full business applicant, James Mazarelli, location 516 Mountain Road, Discussion, regulated activities without permits, status of the show cause.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Jim? The status of the show cause me, the show cause?
Jim, you can just, you can come up to the podium.
Don't get in here today because I don't want to hear my wife at night.
Right.
Okay, I'm Jim Mazarelli, I live at 516 Mountain Road. I have 80 acres on my side of the road. I have, I do hay, I got an apple orchard. I planted last year probably $200,000 worth of trees. I brought in so far this year, 30 something loads of topsoil. We have five more coming tomorrow. What you see from the road is not where I've been working, but that's where I'm heading because through some advice, I, I want to get that where it's looking fantastic. So tomorrow I have five loads of topsoil coming in for the top. And I'm gonna start at the top and come down. Put the topsoil in, seed it.
What you're, what you're, we're talking about here is the show cause hearing that we had on April 1st, 2025.
Can't hear you.
He's having a hard time.
Okay. Yes, it was the show cause hearing on April 1st, 2025.
Yep.
And in addition to stopping all activity, you were required to install temporary sedimentation and erosion control measures to the satisfaction of the inland wetlands enforcement official. Number two, you're supposed to furnish a complete wetland survey of the property to be performed by a certified soil scientist. You're supposed to provide a soil and erosion control plan drafted and stamped by a certified engineer. And once wetlands delineation is complete, submit appropriate permit applications for wetland and zoning. So that's what you're here for with those, those were what you were cited for on April 1st.
Yep.
So what's the status of your? We can start at the sedimentation and erosion control measures.
Well, let's talk about, well, the erosion control measures, I put in a 30, maybe 40 foot long hole. Okay, to capture the water. And so no water goes down the hill past that point. Now, this is at the, this is behind my house. Now, over on the other side, I've, I've got hay bales. I've got a pipe going from where the waterfall comes out to going down to the pond. And I put hay bales, Marty suggested I put hay bales where the pipe is. So we got three and three of the hay bales.
Now, did Wetlands Enforcement Officer official check that out? Did Nate check that out? Okay, is this working?
Move real close to that.
Okay. Did Nate come to your property and, and take a look at your sedimentation controls?
No.
Okay, because that was part of the, the order.
I, I was up there on Sunday.
Yeah, but you're not the.
No, I'm not.
Inland Wetlands Enforcement Official, that would be Nate or Jeremy would have had to come up to see if those were to their satisfaction. Neither of those came to see that, so that's still not done. Okay, the other thing was furnish a complete wetland survey of the property. You have a soil scientist now doing a survey of your property?
Before we got together.
Mm-hmm.
Because I need to know what they're gonna question.
Yeah.
To meet with this gentleman and his boss.
Okay, and that's, and that's Nate. Just for the record.
Jim, you can just talk into this.
Okay. Yeah, because you're not at the, you're not at the podium. Well, if, if you go to a podium, you might not hear me.
I won't hear you.
Okay, so I'll just stay there with that. Okay. Yeah, yeah, just talk into that because that gets recorded. That records just like this records, okay? So anyway, go back to the Marty meeting.
Muting on itself, I'm just gonna put it right here.
Good, okay.
So, so he lined up a meeting with them and this gentleman and his boss.
Uh-huh.
Nate, Nate and his boss.
Okay.
And so I said to Marty, cancel the meeting. He said, why? I said, because you never told me about the meeting. And three times I asked your engineer to come and talk to me about price. Three times, two times he set up a meeting, never called, never showed up.
Okay, so do you have another one? Have you contacted another soil scientist?
No, we, I just dumped this one.
Yeah, but you still need one. Because part of the order was you have to have a, a, a complete wetland survey of the property to be.
Okay, so what's the purpose, can I ask the purpose?
The purpose of that was so that you could, you'll know what you can and cannot touch as far as digging. Okay, if you had a wetland boundary, you know, you can't.
Can I ask this question?
75 feet of that.
When's the last time that you asked the person the higher soil scientists than each?
Well, they, most people come in, if they're doing a lot of excavating, they know where their boundaries are.
I know where my.
So they already have a map, do you have a map of your soil, of your wetlands boundaries?
You have the map. I'm not in wetlands.
Yeah, but we don't survey your property, you have, you should have a la, a map of, of your wetlands.
If I've got a field.
Uh-huh.
Is that wetlands?
It could be, well, it could be if, depending and whether it's a regulated areas, how close the field is to your ponds.
Well, actually, the field runs right to the edge of the pond.
Right, so, and you also have an agricultural. So you're probably okay with that, but this, this is beside the point. The, the order was for you to get that because you're doing so much digging up there. And to, to.
I'm not, I'm.
Okay. All right, well, that, you haven't done that, so you don't have a certified soil scientist. And you also are supposed to have a soil and erosion control plan drafted by a certified engineer. And that was probably one of the other guys that was with Marty that you don't have anymore?
Certified engineer to certify what?
To certify, it's erosion control plan. Where you're going to control all the erosion that you have going on up there. So you're supposed to have one of those. And then once those delineations were complete, you're supposed to submit an appropriate permit application to do whatever you want to do up there. See, I think what happened is the cart got before the horse. If, if, if you had all this done ahead of time, you could have come in with a plan and said, hey, I want to, you know, I want to do this, I want to do that. And we could have told you whether that was allowable or not.
I'm in a hayfield, it's not wetlands. That's where I'm working. So how could you say?
I don't know if you're working in wetland soil or not. Because wetlands is determined by.
They test it, it's not wetland soil. You believe it's wetland soil?
I, I was up there on Sunday because I wanted to be prepared for this meeting.
Yeah, you shouldn't, you shouldn't have been up there on Sunday.
I just went for a visit.
Okay.
And I went for a visit so I can understand.
But that should have been a, that's a whole different issue of, of what goes on.
Well, no, I was looking for the violations.
Uh-huh.
That's what I was after, I wanted to see whether there is wetlands violations and running water and open water, et cetera, and so forth. And what I saw was a lot of work that was done to manage that. And I don't think it's been conveyed as to what that management work has been and, and how it's been accomplished. And what he's doing now, which he showed me, if he lives up to it in the next two weeks, I think would complete any question about that.
You still don't know where.
My question would be, is it's time maybe for Nate to go up there and look at what he did? And then decide the next step as to whether or not we need a, a soil scientist. I believe we need an engineer to map what he has done. And I think he should have done that, and I thought you did do that. I thought you took an overhead, an over aerial map with Nate and marked the locations.
I could probably talk to Mr. Borges because he's got nothing to do.
Well, the whole, the whole thing is, is that we, what you're telling me, this doesn't do anything when it comes to what the order was.
You're talking about the order, you're giving an order.
This is the order that was.
Not wetlands.
This is an order of what was going on because of the activity, this is what.
But there's no wetlands.
Well, when we had this meeting, you didn't come.
I came.
Yeah, but we, we all showed up, we had to wait a little while, but we were here.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. If you have a, a day in court, right? And the court's closed when you get there, what do you do?
You wait until they open it up a little bit.
No, the world doesn't work like.
That's a whole different issue.
That's your opinion.
Right.
Right.
It's like.
You're 81, you've got a lot of years left. I don't have that many.
But we have this order that nothing's been done, if you kept your engineers.
My point, my point to you is all the work that I am doing out there that you can see from the road is not wetlands, none of it.
So you're, you're saying you're not going to comply with any, anything on here as far as getting.
Well, you're asking for stuff that I, I shouldn't have to supply you with.
Well, I can't tell you whether you're going into the wetlands or not if you, if you don't have a map. And didn't you have?
I thought you were the wetlands people.
We, we are, but we don't have maps of what you're doing on your property.
You got a map, you got a map of my property?
Yeah, but it's, if it's not delineated where the wetlands are, we don't know unless you get it surveyed.
Okay. Well.
And also on your.
Let me ask you one, another question, how many people have you asked to have their property surveyed?
Plenty of people.
Hey, cool.
Any, any guy who comes in and builds a house in the wetlands has to have it. They have, they have it delineated, yes, they have.
You can build a house in the wetlands?
Around the wetlands, you can.
I seen.
There's, there's a, there's a setback. There's a setback.
Okay, just between you and I.
Yeah.
You know how much the wetlands in Torrenton has cost me in my lifetime?
Well, this is.
Millions.
Well, this is a way that you could have gotten away from having half of the problems. Because if you had it surveyed, you would have known where you can and cannot go digging. And we wouldn't even be here right now because you would have already known, I can't do this without a permit. And you could come in and say, hey, can I do this?
The shopping mall is on top of East Main.
Yes, but that's, that doesn't make any difference to what.
Because I own that property. I sold it because the wetlands commission told me I could never build on it. I sold it for $60,000. It's worth $2 million. You guys cost.
I wasn't on the board then.
I know, but you, it's, it's.
I don't know, I can't, I can't answer for that.
It's gotta end, it's gotta end.
The problem is, is this was the order that was given by the commission.
You gave me an order and it's not in wetlands.
And you didn't do anything.
I did.
You did, the only thing you did was install the temporary sedimentation erosion control measures. And it also said that you needed a wetlands enforcement official to come and look at it to make sure it was good.
When I'm done, I'll be.
And you haven't done it yet, but you were supposed to do that within a month. And you still haven't done it. That's why you're in violation.
You had, no, I'm not in violation, you had no right entering.
I don't know if we can, we, I'm not going to be able to settle this with you, so it'll just probably have to go to court. And let you judge.
If you want it for, you be my guest.
You know, that's, that's up to you. That's just the way it is, I mean, I can't do anything, this is what the survey.
When I go to court, I'm going to explain to the judge what the wetlands has cost me over the years, number one.
You can, you can tell the judge anything you'd like.
I'm going to explain to the judge that none of the area that I'm working in right now is in wetlands, none of.
How far away from the wetlands is it?
How far away from the wetlands is it?
There's the new survey online. There, there's no survey of the property of the wetlands as they exist at this.
Well, the, the aerial photo with the overlay.
It is, there is, yeah. Would you like me to share it?
Yeah, I'd like.
I'm gonna leave it up to you, you want to go to court, be my guest.
So what we really like to do is. It's have you do.
We're gonna put up an aerial photograph.
And then you could, then we could decide, or you could decide what you could do to, to fix what's been done, it needs to be stabilized. Is what I'd rather.
I told you it'll be stabilized within two weeks.
But you don't have the maps or anything to, to prove what you, like where the wetlands are for the next.
I don't have wetlands where I'm working.
But it could be within a wetlands regulation.
What's a?
They're regulated within 75 feet.
Of the wet.
Of wetlands, right, 75 or 100 now?
It's 75 feet of wetlands, 500 feet of the, or 100 feet of pond.
Me, you're telling me, let me get this straight. I'm a farmer. A farmer's gonna plow his field. I could show you 50 places in Torrenton. They plow their fields right next to a wetlands, never get a permit.
Jim, the, the issue is that, that's fine, and you, you've gotten, you, you came here, you got an exemption for the ads of right agricultural activity, right? You were, you got an exemption for the mowing and the harvesting of hay, right? And the planting of the apple trees, that's what we talked about last year. The grading of that slope down to the middle pond and the waterfall and all that, the commission determined that's not an agricultural activity.
What's that got to do with it?
Because it, wetlands regulates the activity, not the area. So if you're doing something that is exempted, like agriculture, you, you don't need a permit, you can come here and ask to be exempted. If you're doing something like grading a slope, not for agricultural purposes, you need to get a permit like everyone else who has to come to the commission.
You're telling me to park yourself? And he takes and plows his land and now he's got nowhere to go? House?
Sorry, I'm.
He cuts down some trees, right? He goes in, takes the tree, he stops it, goes in there, regraze it the way he wants it so he can mow it. You're telling me he needs a permit?
No, I'm telling, it, it, it doesn't, my, my advice to the commission is that all of this point is moot. There was an order to cease activity and follow what, you know, what Chairman Bate just said as far as the activities. The order was not complied with and the period for appeal to Superior Court has ended. So the commission has to make a determination on whether or not, A, they're going to impose fines, take legal action, or, or not do those things. But at this point, you know, I can't do anything, the order's out there, it's up to the commission to make a determination on whether or not they're going to take legal action to enforce it or impose fines. That's the question, I believe, that is in front of you today.
So just so I can understand one thing. I know that he's putting topsoil in from that area where the waterfall is, all the way down to where the pond used to be, which is already seeded. And he's going to seed the rest of that whole bank.
And, and put hay on it.
Yes, and he's doing that within the next two weeks.
Two weeks.
So.
The whole thing will be done.
Topsoil, he's got all the seeds, he's got everything to do that. So in effect, that was the area in my understanding that caused the, the violation.
Yes, but the, yeah, but the point is that there was, that that, that is an initial step to control erosion on the site, but there needed to be steps taken to, to submit an application, a wetlands permit application.
Understand.
Right?
So that you haven't submitted, it was an application to do that. So you're in the middle of it now. You're, you're doing.
No, I'm in the middle, not in the middle, I'm 90% done.
I know, you're doing it. What about the waterfall? That.
What does the waterfall got to do with you?
You're, you're changing the water course.
I'm not.
Turn it into a waterfall.
Okay, let, let me try to explain to you why the waterfall's there. I've got, I'm on a property that lives on the bottom of Mountain Road. All the water from the whole mountain comes onto my property. Even on Ralph's side, which is my son-in-law, he live on the opposite side. That comes through the ledge. When he hits my property, the ledge stops and it goes to soil. I got water that bubbles up out of the ground. Coming out of the ledge, everywhere. So the pipes I have going to the waterfall are two pipes that are constantly water coming out of the ledge. It go into the pipe, instead of me having water all over the place, and they go through the pipe over the waterfall. That's exactly where the water comes from. I didn't put that in, I don't pump it, it's.
Yeah, but you diverted it, right?
No, I didn't divert it.
How did it get to the pipe?
Well, I'm saying that it's gonna go that way anyway.
Yeah, but you put a pipe.
I just didn't want everything all wet.
Yeah, I understand that. But you should have come in for a permit.
For what?
To divert the water.
I hope you land someday acreage. And I hope you want to do what you want to do. I'm 81, I got a couple of years left.
Now, getting back to this order.
Okay.
We're back to the order. And you're not going to do anything on the order. Is that what I'm taking, you're gonna do the sedimentation, but you haven't done anything in time, on time?
Time.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you didn't have it done and then have Nate or somebody come look at it, you're supposed to have that done by now. And you haven't had it surveyed and you don't even have a surveyor. And you also don't have a certified engineer that's.
I know exactly where my property lines are.
The, the wetlands boundaries.
Wetlands boundaries.
Right, where the wetlands are.
Do you not have a wetlands boundary in your map?
No.
You don't?
No, there's no wetlands bound, not unless you do it and it gets put on there.
Why would my wetlands boundary be any different than a map?
It doesn't make any difference, you, you haven't done what was on the order and the order is an order.
It has a wetlands map. None of the area that I'm working in is wetlands.
There were, so there's a state level wetlands layer that they put out, so the state estimates where the wetlands are. I'm sorry, can you hear me, Jim? The state puts out a map to let the commission know roughly where it is. Every applicant today has had to get a soil scientist to figure out exactly where the boundaries of those wetlands are. So they have to pay to have someone come and show it, and this is from the state, the state makes us do this as far as how we regulate wetlands. So we're, you know, we, we have no control over this locally other than to regulate the wetlands per the state. So we have that, the map that the state puts out, and then we have a map that you had gotten a permit for dredging the lower pond, right? Do you remember that some years ago? Right, right, so when you were dredging that out, you got a permit to do that. And so there is a wetlands map around, immediately around the perimeter of the pond down there, so we do have that on file. But other than that, there's no other map wetlands on the rest of the property. And it was done some years ago, it was probably, you probably remember better than me, like around 2,000 or something like that, does that make sense? So that's what we have as far as mapping right now, we have what you submitted around 2,000, around the lowest pond, and then we have estimation of where the wetlands is, kind of for informational purposes, from the state. And so the applicant, well, because that's, that's just for our screening, so that when, when projects come in, we know where to ask for wetland surveys. It's always up to the applicant to provide the wetlands mapping. I don't know, only a soil scientist can tell us this. No, I, yeah.
I'm in a field.
Uh, it's, again, I couldn't tell you, you couldn't tell me, no one on this board could tell you where the wetlands are, it needs to be a soil scientist.
All I could tell you is the hay. Chops all the bark. And I'm starting at the top and I'm going down. And when I get to the bottom, it'll be done. The whole thing. I don't know, I don't know what you want out of me.
Well, what we wanted out of you was on the order.
Yeah.
Did you ever read the order?
You could play this game all.
No, did you ever read the order that was given to you?
I read it.
Okay, and you, and then you, you, you were gonna hire people to do what was on the border.
Yeah, you know, I taught you what happened.
And then you didn't want them.
Nobody seems to want to take and come and meet.
Because they didn't.
Price.
Right.
They don't have time. How, how do you have an engineer come to me two times, make an appointment, not show up, not call, and still want the job? I'm not like that, I'm a businessman.
Yeah, did you try to get any other soil?
Marty was in charge and he quit after I canceled the meeting. I canceled the meeting because the engineer wouldn't come to talk price before he, before he showed up. And you did, the soil scientist, I can't just let him come on the property, meet with him, all of a sudden I get a bill for 10 Gs.
No, you should know how much it's going to cost and it's up to them to give it to you. But if it doesn't work out with you, then you should have somebody else in line.
Tell that to Marty. He was the one handling it, he just quit on me. I don't know what to tell you.
Well.
What do you want me to do?
Do what the order said. You do what the order said, you're fine. And then submit a permit for what you want to do or what you've already done, it'll be an after.
I didn't do it.
I did it.
So that would be for that area that we're, we're, just so I'm clear. We're not talking the total property, we're talking the area where he's currently working, which is from that ledge where the waterfall is, down to where the lower pond is. And is there any disturbance above that, Nate?
Um, above where the highest pond was? I, I mean, it would be any disturbance in the regulated area, so they'd have to figure out where the wetlands are and then where there's disturbance within the regulated area.
Nate, where the pond was.
Right.
You know where it was.
The, the upper one, yeah.
I filled it.
Right.
Okay, and, and I, it's hayed, it's, it's seeded and hayed. You could see up in the road.
Yes.
It's all, it's all hayed. In fact, it's growing clover right now.
Mm-hmm, right.
So if in fact, he gets a soil scientist to check the perimeter of that section, that would comply to meeting that.
And he mapped it, right?
And he mapped it.
But then if he does any other work.
Geography map.
Anywhere else on the property, it could be back here the same way, because he may be in wetland soil land. So if you had the whole property surveyed, then you could do what you want, get your permits, everything's going to be good, instead of coming back every few months with another problem.
So you want me to have 160 acres surveyed?
Well, at least around where you're going to be digging, around your house and around that general area.
You know, because I love being on an excavator all day long, I might be digging anywhere.
Exactly, that, that's, that's the reason.
I, you know, I don't know what to tell you, I, I just, you know, I, I don't go out of my way to break the laws. I love people and I, I help people all the time. And, you know, I, I just give up. I can't, I can't remember things, I can't, I can't hear, but you tell me what you want to do. What if I gave you 25 Gs? Just listen to me, just a second. Let the wetlands hold it, when I'm all done with my projects, whatever you need for the permits that you thought you needed, take the money out and then give me my money back. If you're happy, if you're not happy, keep it. How can I make it any better than that? You're gonna love it.
I wish it was that easy.
I know, I know, but you're asking me. I could die next week, then what are you gonna do? You going after my wife? I should have brought her.
Who owns the property? Who owns the property? Your wife owns the property?
Yeah.
It's really her responsibility.
I'm going off, I'm gonna tell her that.
Because it's her property.
She's gonna be mad at you.
Now, if, okay.
What do you want me to?
Let's let's just pretend all this was done.
Okay.
Okay, let's let's pretend it was done even though it wasn't. What's what was your plan? I mean, what what did you wanna do with all this excavating and all this work that you've done? Because if all of this was done, then you could have come in with a permit and you could have done it with no problem.
Here's here's my goal. My goal is to get the property where it's manageable, because I have the excavator.
Mm hmm.
I I can't right now start where the road is. He knows how steep that is. I can't get on there with my twelve-foot mower and the tractor and come down that. It's too steep. So I gotta grade. I gotta cut down this and raise this to make it degrade better, and that's what I'm doing. And I I started at the top, and I'm I'm bringing five loads of topsoil in tomorrow, and I'll start at the top and I'll start working my way down with topsoil. And as soon as I put the topsoil in, I seed it, and I'll have the guy's hand.
Now, what about the waterfall? You didn't have.
I'm not taking the waterfall out. You could take me to court. You could do whatever you want.
That was.
The waterfall's staying.
You should have had some sort of a plan for the waterfall, too.
What?
For the waterfall, because you're directing water. You're moving the water in different directions.
The water's there.
Yeah, it is there.
We get it from point A to point B.
It's not in a pipe. You should have had a permit to do that, too.
I got fifty thousand dollars costing pipes. That's how many, that's how much water I get off a mountain road.
And if if all this was mapped and planned, we wouldn't even be discussing this. You probably would have had your permit. We would have done it all done.
I make it up as I go along every day.
Well, that's that's kind of what the problem is.
I know. But my 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 wife says I'm crazy.
Well, if you if you started with an engineer to come up and map the property, map that area that we're talking about, including the waterfall, including. Do the topography map. You have you have an engineer, a civil engineer, draw that all up.
You don't know any good civilian engineers?
Well, maybe Ellen does. I don't know.
Well, that's what Colby probably would have done for it.
There you go. He's pointing the one for you. So you get that map done.
Yep.
And then you draw in there what you're going to do, what your plan is for that, finishing that property.
And I'll be all done with it by then.
And that, well, but at least you have a document now that could be given to a soil scientist to say, yes, this is the perimeter, and what you've done and the way you've managed the the water.
Do that.
You the way you've managed the water is acceptable to a soil scientist. Then you then you're living up to what that document says.
But he's not getting a soil scientist. He's just gonna have the.
Well, a civil engineer to start with.
Yeah, he's gotta have it, the topography.
Topography map from a civil engineer, just. It's gonna show the elevation plan and the and the low point and et cetera and so forth. He's gonna mark in there where you've got your waterfall and your pipe.
How long you think that'll take him?
A good civil engineer? I don't know. There's a civil engineer out there. Let's ask the audience.
Well, no, I I guess I'll just jump in. This process can take a long time.
Yes.
It can take many months.
I'll be done with the project in two weeks.
Yeah, but still, you gotta have it.
Okay, so you want it anyway?
Well, I think you have to 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 get rid of this violation.
Okay.
You need to, well, the the order, the order just doesn't go away. I don't think we can get rid of the order, can we? Can't rescind the order.
I mean, it's already, it it is already out there. I mean, you could, I guess you could vote to rescind the order, but it's not, you know. I see no reason to at this point.
Well, if you go that far, at least to have the civil engineer document what you've done.
You got any suggest?
I don't know any civil engineer.
I don't know any either. I probably do what I order civil engineers. Okay, I'll do that.
But that's one thing. But we, I'd still rather get you to have a a wetlands soil scientist check where the wetlands are, and then we won't do this again. When you when you're digging, I know you got the excavator.
Put a wetlands in.
Well, we don't have a map. Nate explained to you that there's there's a general map, but then when somebody comes in, the owner of the property does wetland flag. They have somebody coming and do it. Because like you say, you like to dig a lot of holes, so the next time you dig a hole, you may be in the wetlands again. And then you'll be coming in here and getting another order to get a.
Yeah, I know what wetlands is.
Well, in the area that's outlined, you they could determine where the wetlands are on what you've modified.
Right.
The before, before you touched it is gone. There's no evidence left. So what you need is the current situation documented, and then if there is a problem there, then that needs to be addressed. But you need to have that documentation so we can make a decision.
So you're asking me for a.
Well, you need a civil engineer to draw the topography map for that whole area from the waterfall. Civil engineer from the waterfall.
And a soil scientist.
And a soil scientist.
Okay, all right.
And once that soil, once you have that drawing, the soil scientist should mark that area around the perimeter and say, these are wetlands.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, who's responsible for the grading? Isn't that plant, is that zoning, planning and zoning?
Yeah, there still is an outstanding order for plant, from planning and zoning for an engineered plan for the grading. So but if you do what we're talking about for wetlands.
Grading.
So if you if you comply with what wetlands needs, which is that plan that they're talking about, that should take care of your grading issue with zoning. They're asking for pretty much the same thing.
So if you basically you're doing what we're asking you, and you're gonna get off the hook for planning and zoning, too.
Marty had Bill Colby. He's a civil engineer, and you had a wetlands. Okay, well, we do have a list, and I can I can share that with you of of local folks.
Got any friends at ONG?
Okay, so for for today, we've discussed this. Okay, so for today.
I don't know. They might have contractors that they use.
David and Ray.
What what we should do then, if you're receptive to getting a soil scientist to do the mapping.
Yeah.
And an engineer to do the topography. And does he have to get, you're supposed to have a certified engineer to stamp the erosion control plan. Now, is that?
That's what the civil engineer would be doing.
Engineer will do that, too.
Correct. They're gonna show.
Do that, then you'll be in compliance, and then you could give us a plan for what you're.
Okay.
What you've done or what you're gonna do.
Okay.
And then we should be good.
So I'll talk to Mr.
Well, there's gonna be a time constraint of a month. If you don't have these people in plan starting to do something, or is something written that they're working for you.
Right.
In a month, then this is just gonna go to court.
Okay.
Okay, we're just gonna submit it to court, and you you won't have to come back here again. You'll just have to go to court. Okay, is that fair?
Where would I have to go to court if it goes to court?
I don't know.
It would be Litchfield County Superior Court, so in Torrington.
Court in Torrington.
Oh, in Torrington?
Yeah, yeah.
Where's the superior court?
Well, where the where the courthouse is on Field Street. That big place. So, okay, so if you're gonna do that, we're gonna be good.
Okay.
Okay?
Hey, I talked to Mr. Borges. He wants to get out here sometime tonight.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Sir, just take so much of your time.
No, that's okay. As long as you understand what's going on, that's the main thing. Okay. What's next? Okay, next, applicant Paul Bedzin's. Location fifty Goodwin Street, Red Mountain Trail. Activity, construction of multi-use trail from Goodwin Street to Newfield Road. Man up.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. My my name is Matt Ormrod. I'm actually, oh, it's Paul there.
I'm here, yeah.
All right, thank you, Paul.
But I would like to defer to to Matthew from SLR, who's done the engineering work and who can provide the update on on the application and the revisions that he's made, if that's all right with you guys.
Thanks, Paul. Hi, this is Matt Ormrod. I'm with SLR. I'm an environmental scientist. My my primary office location is one ninety-five Church Street in New Haven. So as as Paul just mentioned, we had some revisions to a plan. So this plan was initially presented to the commission, I believe, on April first by Paul. And then again on May sixth, and we had some some questions from the commission that were, we addressed in the interim. But Nate, Nate, I don't know if you could, if you have a map or anything to pull up while I talk, but I'll I'll just give a brief overview of of the project and and then go over. I'll get right into the the changes that were made since the last meeting.
Uh, Matt, do you have a, do you have a copy handy? I mean, I have to go into my email and grab it if you have that. I know Paul shared the most recent revised plan.
I do. Is it all right if I share my screen?
Yeah, go for it. That way you can just mouse around on it and stuff anyway, and I don't have to do that for you.
Perfect. All right, thank you. Okay, so I will ask you to share my screen. Hopefully, somebody there can confirm that they are seeing a title sheet to a plan set. Okay.
Yep, we got it, Matt.
Okay, thank you. So the project location, this is the title sheet, is here in gray. We're at the corner of McDermott and Farley, and then the project area heads west and then down the old Conrail parcel. It's a linear parcel, the old railroad parcel. So back in, not too long ago, the the town received a grant from the Connecticut Department of Trails Recreation for a multi-use trail and some upgrades to the intersection at McDermott Avenue and Farley Place. I believe that was somewhere in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars, of twenty percent of which the 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 city of Torrington matched. And the idea here is to to get this 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 unused sort of blighted property back into good use, because currently the 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 site is used as a it it it's an informal trail. I I guess there's been some homeless campments, so it's not really a form of recreation, recreational parcel. And what this project is looking to do is build a formal trail with with the grant money and and do some intersection improvements. But there are no wetlands in that area, so I won't really be talking about that portion of the project.
I think we went through this last month, didn't we?
Yeah, we went through it. The the I think there's really only two areas that the commission still had questions, and all of the upland area seemed to be acceptable to the commission as far as the the erosion control and everything associated with that. It was just the area by the parking lot.
Yes, okay.
Goodwin Street.
Okay, I'll get right to it. Yes, so this area is the proposed parking area. This is at the end of Goodwin Street, so if you see my cursor up here, this is where Goodwin Street ends, and this is where the proposed parking lot area is is proposed. So the changes here, we we recently had some video footage of this manhole, and there there was a pipe that came out and into this wetland area. We looked at the video footage, and 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 you can't see daylight at the end of the pipe, so we think it it it's probably collapsed or damaged. Either way, it's not functioning. And so we tried to figure out, you know, you know, what's the purpose of this pipe? Do we need to replace it? Is it is it critical? And 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 we, the answer we came up with was yes. This pipe actually conveys water south. South is towards the left of your screen. Well, it it was intended to convey water south under the proposed parking area. That water then gets into the stormwater management system, and I believe it discharges to the intermittent water course over on this part of the site where my cursor is now. So without that pipe, we currently, what what happens is there's this wetland WD here. I'll zoom in a little. It it's sort of a pond over over to the north end of it, and then when during high water periods, there's really nowhere for this water to go other than down this this wetland area, which we didn't. We didn't quite delineate the north side, or I'm sorry, the west side of it, because it goes off off of our property. But from the contours, we could tell it's a drainage. It's it's really a drainage swell, like a vegetated drainage swell. So what happens is water, if it's a wet season or a high water period, water will will naturally want to flow towards the south, towards into this drainage swell. And then typically, if if it were functioning properly, it would enter this pipe be and and be conveyed further south. So right now, what we have is water just built. It floods in here. And and this pipe, we believe, might be the sole source of flood relief for the residential parcels in the north. So without without this pipe, I can say water, the water levels in this wetland will rise during wet periods and 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 flood this residential property up here to the north. So what we what we came up with was was to, A, yes, replace the pipe. So that's what we have shown in here, which is different from what I presented at the May sixth meeting. We intend to essentially replace it in kind. We have an eight, twelve-inch RCP with a riprap apron. Water will enter into that and again be conveyed south. In order to put that pipe in, we we are proposing, we we do have to do, we do have a little increase in the wetland impact area. I believe we were around thirty square feet last month, and now because of this pipe issue, we need we need to extend it a little because we don't know really where it collapsed underground. So we have it, we have extended a little, and then and we've added some inlet control to to slow down the velocities. So that that really was one, one of the big changes that was was made from last meeting. I will now jump to the other area if 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 I can. I'll get back to some of these other changes. But the other area that the commission had questions about was on the northern end of the trail, the terminus of the trail. It doesn't quite reach the river. It has a little turnaround at the end. But over over in this portion of of the site, what we have are are two wetlands that one actually formed in the old rail bed, this one down here. And the other is is mostly off-site. The property boundaries is heavy line here. So before we just, on May sixth, I presented a plan where we just had drainage pipes connecting the wetland to the, I'm sorry, to the west of the trail. The water wants to flow from your, from the top of the screen to the bottom. Currently, what it does now is 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 the water levels rise in this wetland area here where my cursor is. And at some point, they reach the elevation of of this informal trail that's there currently. And when it hits that elevation, it it simply just runs over the width of the footpath that's currently there, and then it enters this other wetland system on the east side of the trail. And 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 so in order to keep that, preserve that, or retain that hydrologic connectivity from this wetland to this wetland, what we came up with was these catch basins. They're they're called type DG, and I and I may refer to Paul on this. I'm admittedly not an engineer, but these type catch basins, what they allow us to do is is maintain the existing elevation at which this wetland discharges over the current trail and into this wetland. So that way, we don't change the hydrologic connectivity between these two wetlands, and 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 we won't manipulate water levels. We're essentially essentially mimicking where this, well, we're gonna pipe the intermittent water course and put it under the trail, but the the elevation at which that the water discharges over the current trail is gonna be the same as where this invert on this catch basin is, or.
Excuse me, Matt, do you have a cross-sections for the the pipe?
Matt, do you have a cross-sections for the pipe that shows the DG? Inlet structure?
Bear with me, I will.
It's basically, the pipe is underground, but the catch basin, the top is flush with the existing ground. So there's no change in elevation that then, the water will just catch into those, into that grate.
And Jay, I believe that was the issue that you had brought up at the last meeting, was that if it was, you know, if it was settled down low, it would start to drain, it would channelize the water, and it would start to drain the periphery of the well, and this should, you know, work to kind of mimic the existing conditions.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Paul, I believe this is the
That there should be two specific cross-sections along the length of the pipes.
Yes, apologies. Cross-sections. Okay.
Yeah, there we go. That's perfect.
Yeah, okay. All right, playing with the Zoom, so it's trying to maximize it for everyone, but Paul, did you want to go over this, or did you want me to just kind of?
Yeah, so the idea, like you said, Matt, the idea there is to basically just catch any of that overland flow. We're not going to restrict or drain that upslope wetland. We're going to leave it in its natural state so that it can, it can remain as it is, and then when, as Matt said, once once those wetlands start to fill up during rain events, then that water will be caught in these catch basin tops. And they're designed so they're open on the ends, as well as the, on either side of the grate, and that allows that water to be caught, not just on the top, because if the top ever does get covered with debris or leaves, whatever you, the water can still get in the sides. We will still maintain them as part of the trail maintenance. However, this was the, this was a really good solution to address the comments from the commission. And I think it'll work well.
Yeah, great, thanks, Paul. So yeah, that was our solution to maintaining this hydrologic connectivity between the wetland system on this side of the proposed trail and the wetland system over here. Now granted, and because of that change, we were actually able to reduce our wetland impact, so I'm sorry, my numbers are on a few different pages. This has all been submitted for the record, by the way, Nate and the commissioners. So we were able to decrease our direct wetland impacts with the use of these different types of catch basins from about 3,500 square feet to about 1,300 square feet. So that yeah, that's the area of disturbance within the wetland, within wetlands. The other yeah, so those were really the two main concerns, I believe, the commission had last meeting. In terms of, you know, because we are proposing direct impacts, I believe the commission was looking to see if we had any ways we can enhance other portions of wetlands or just kind of restoration to mitigate for those impacts. So what we came up with is, is we want to add a native seed mix to basically all the disturbed areas on either side of the proposed trail. So if you see on this plan sheet, we have this polygon symbol here, it's got this little green, green marks in it. So those, we're proposing two native plant, native seed mixes, I will pull those up. Just bear with me again. So in the upland review areas, so these are the areas that we anticipate to be relatively dry most of the year. They are in the upland review areas, so they do contribute directly to the wetlands. But in the upland review, sort of the drier areas, we are proposing this New England Conservation Wildlife Mix. So once the grading is done, all disturbed areas along the trail are going to be seeded that are in upland review areas or in upland areas outside upland review areas, if that makes sense, are going to be seeded with this native mix, and this provides a lot of great wildlife food. There's a host plant in here for the monarch butterfly, which is currently a candidate, federal candidate species. So that's going to add excellent habitat to those areas. And in areas where we will have direct wetland activities, those will be restored with a wetland seed mix. And here's specifications on that. So again, these two seed mixes are going to be applied to all the disturbed areas on the plan set you see here in this, in this symbol, which is approximately 30,000, 31,000 square feet of disturbed area that will be seeded with a nice native seed mix with beneficial wildflowers, host plants for insects. In addition to that, we have a number of trees, they're sort of serving a dual purpose with zoning, but we picked a native tree species, eastern red cedar. It's got foliage year round, but this plant, as I said, it's a native native tree species here in Connecticut, New England, and it's great for wildlife, especially birds, they feed on the seeds. So we have several of those plants, sort of at the northern terminus of the site, and then we also have those same plants proposed in the parking area, the proposed parking area. And
Yeah, and if I may add, those plantings in the parking area are also addressing planning and zoning comments for screening from the adjacent properties there too, so.
Great, thanks, Paul. Okay, this is what I wanted to show, so, and this is on the same sheet as the the spec for the native seed mixes. This is our planting schedule showing the number of plants, of trees and shrubs that we're going to use. Again, these are native, ones technically a tree, ones technically a shrub, but native. They add great wildlife habitat and food sources really to the area. So with that, I believe those were the major concerns that we've addressed for the commission tonight, and with that, I I guess, Paul, if you have any remarks, feel free to add to it. If not, I think we'd be ready to take some questions.
Sure, yeah, no, I think we've addressed everything, so happy to answer any other questions.
Engineering, look at the riprap where they're putting it in near the street that he was talking about where the manhole was.
So you're talking about the Goodwin Street parking area, right? So you're asking about the inlet and protection there? And whether it's not, like it's, our engineer has
Yeah, it's engineering check though.
Well, Paul's our city engineer, so so he's, he's kind of, yeah, right, you know, you can assume that he's reviewed and okayed these plans. I'll also add that, you know, in my mind, it's a good compensation act at Goodwin Street because the, you know, the juniper trees that are going to be, or the eastern red cedar that they're going to be planting are replacing what are all Norway maples that are all crowded in the drainage right now, so it'd be kind of a restoration, and it's, it may be filling part of the well, but it will be replacing non-native invasive plants with native plants.
That's good.
We actually altered, I'm sorry. That, so on the screen right now, you can see Goodwin Street. On the right-hand side, that's the northern part, that, that is the area of impact that had to grow to accommodate the pipe inlet there. So the tree, right, currently that area where the cursor is now is kind of a swale that has fairly large red, Norway maples growing out of it right now.
Is that the only place that those are growing? Are they growing around that area too?
I'm not 100% sure about that. I didn't really look at the shrub, I mean, they are a common tree in disturbed edge areas like that, so I wouldn't be surprised if there was more in that general area.
Okay. Did, you had time to review the plans? When did they come in?
So we just, we, I think we, Paul shared these with, these final kind of penned revisions. We'd been looking at this the prior week or two, kind of finalizing this and making it aligned with planning and zoning. For a little bit of background, this application's been submitted to planning and zoning, and so there's a public hearing for that application. The public hearing is still open, it's been continued because it has to wait for the wetlands report where I'll indicate whether or not a permit has been granted for the activity. So, so yeah, so we've, so I've been working, I mean, full disclosure for the record, this is a project that I, you know, am working on and with a separate hat through the grant, administering that grant. But, so I've been very close to this project and helping design and develop it.
We just redesigned the parking lot last week to reduce the number of parking spaces that were close to the property line to the adjacent properties. We pushed back one parking stall to the east, that's why you can see that we've added that screening in there, so to give more room for the screening and also more room for the, for those pipe inlets. So that was just submitted last week, I believe it was Friday, I reviewed it. And then Matt submitted the, an email today with a written reply to your comment, to your comments.
Still has the four spaces that it originally had?
Yes, so we have, I believe, five plus the handicap space.
Okay.
There will be posts set up, so no vehicular traffic, like a little four-wheel gas-powered vehicle can't come through onto the trail.
So as, as with any, you know, paved 10-foot trail, there will be bollards at the entrances to prevent any types of larger vehicles from accessing the trail.
I apologize, I'm scrolling, this is Matt with SLR. I believe that is shown on our full plan set, but yeah, sorry to interrupt, Paul, please continue.
Yeah.
So Jay, just for an overview of where we're at with this application, because it's a little different, we've only accepted this application. So we haven't actually made a determination on whether or not there's a significant impact. So we need a motion for determination on whether it's a significant impact and need of a public hearing. And you could either, A, give yourself more time to review the plans, because they did just come in officially like this. So you could either, A, defer to the July 1 meeting, or if you feel like you're comfortable with the proposed changes as is, and you feel like, you know, it's been noticed properly, then you're free to proceed to, to grant the permit if you wish. But those are the decisions to, you know, schedule the public hearing or not, and to know whether to grant the permit or defer the decision till the next meeting.
Yeah, I don't think it needs a public hearing, and as far as myself, I'm comfortable with.
Just one question, I'm not familiar with the location, but are there any residential homes close to where that parking lot is?
So there are two homes right adjacent to that, that property line.
So those, are those homeowners aware that, of this project?
So for the public hearing process through planning and zoning, every abutter had to receive notification via mail, and every road frontage had to be posted with a sign noting the date of the public hearing for Planning and Zoning Commission. So they've, everyone has been noticed, there's been, the legal notices have been run. The public hearing is still open, but as of the last meeting, no one, none of the immediate abutters provided any negative comment or any comment at all regarding the project.
All right, so I move that we grant, oh, I move that it's not a significant activity on 50 Goodwin Street, Red Mountain Trail, and that we grant the wetlands permit for construction of a multi-use trail from Goodwin Street to Newfield Road.
Motion, can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, motion carries.
And Randy, just for the record, Randy's on the call. Did you have a vote on that?
Repeat that.
Yeah, I just, yeah, did you want to vote on that motion?
I can vote on the motion, yeah. I was late, but I joined about 7:20.
Yeah, I did see you come on, so you were able to, you were here for for the 50 Goodwin Street. I just didn't, I mean, you're free to abstain if you'd like, but just wanted to get for the record your vote on it.
Okay, well, I'll abstain.
Okay.
So motion carries.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for your time. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, next, new business applicant AJK LLC, location 3350 Winston Road, Activity, continue existing material recycling operations within URA following approval of Wetland Map Amendment to resolve cease and desist order.
So, you know, this project has a long history and it's been on our agenda for a long time, so I won't go into it too much other than that there is a active cease and desist order, and the applicant is currently working with the commission to comply with with what's been identified in that order. At this point, they're applying for continuing material recycling operations on the property. They've submitted their application, and they've asked that it be accepted. However, they want to present on this application on the July 1 meeting. They had a couple outstanding items, and they wanted to make sure that everything was tied up so that they could present everything neatly and ideally get an approval on the July 1 meeting. So July 1 is the minimum time between meetings, so you could do that. And I'd recommend, since it doesn't seem like there's any issues with their proposed plan, however, I don't really want to go over their proposed plan because they don't have anyone representing them here, and they asked that it could be accepted and then continued, and then you can make a determination of significance and possibly vote on accepting the permit at the July 1 meeting.
I move that we accept the application for AJK LLC, 3350 Winston Road, map 242 block 003, lot 001, to continue existing material recycling operations within the upland review area following approval of the Wetland Map Amendment to resolve cease and desist order without a determination of significant activity at this time, and to table it to the next hearing or meeting.
Can I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, most, motion carries. Okay. Next, applicant Megan Miller, location 357 West Pearl Road, Activity, grading and construction of footing drain within upland review area and 4,800 square feet of disturbance with upland review area for construction of a single-family home.
Good evening. Everyone hear me?
Yes.
It's a little soft.
Yeah, can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Okay, beautiful, thank you.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you. If you can't, if I drop out, please let me know. Uh, good evening. Megan Miller is project manager with Civil One, representing our applicant and owner Kurt Burnett for the property 357 West Pearl Road. The property is located on West Pearl Road, about 1.44 acres. It's an undeveloped lot that is a rear property. And the property gently slopes from the south to the north to a wetland pocket that is shown here on our screen. The undeveloped lot is partly wooded. Our application here is for work associated with the construction and permitting for a single family home. The property, the single family home has a footprint about 1,560 square feet with a attached garage and a small deck and and front porch. And the work that we are requesting for is for minor grading within the upland review area and also for the construction of a footing drain and riprap apron that would serve for the water for the basement. This line here is our proposed limit of disturbance, and that would just really include minor grading. The property is lightly wooded. As you can see pictures in the report that was submitted by wetland scientist Ian Cole. We have erosion controls proposed as part of this project, including silt fence along the downward slope of all the work as well as a stockpile material area and then near the area of the road, a construction entrance. Stormwater management will be provided by an underground stormwater detention system for the building that is located outside of the upland review area. And additionally, for stormwater or the driveway will be handled with an infiltration trench along the edge of the downward slope of the driveway. We reviewed the staff known minutes and notes. I understand that it is in review from the engineer and that the staff has recommended that we revise the construction sequence to include the signposting of the wetland activities. We agree to that, of course, as a condition of our approval. And if you have any questions or concerns, I'm available for any comments. Thank you.
Can you zoom in on this around the house?
Absolutely. So this is the home, and this is the associated grading that we're talking about.
We're not, I'm sorry. Megan, we're not seeing that. You're not moving anymore.
Oh, okay, let me stop sharing and then I'll share again. Usually that does the trick. Okay, can you see now?
Not yet.
Yeah, it doesn't, yeah, it's not coming. Oh, there it is.
There we go. There it is. Okay, yay. Thank you. So this is the proposed footing drain with a riprap apron. And that location is right here. The building is located 77.7 feet away from the wetland. And then our work would just be the associated grading for the for the home.
Okay, so the wetland around these, the farthest out dashed with the flags and then the upland area goes to the dashed red line. Comes close to the corner of the house.
Correct, correct. It being a rare lot, and this is the, the building was put on the highest part of the lot. We're kind of just limited based on where we could put it. We did explore other options, but based on zoning setbacks and trying to get accessibility into the building, we actually flipped the building to minimize the wetlands. So we did go through a couple of different iterations to try to minimize any impact.
Yeah. Okay, so there's no work done in the wetlands and just grading in the upland review area, correct?
Just grading, clearing associated with construction and the construction of the footing drain in the upland review, but absolutely no work in within the wetlands.
And it looks like the limits of clearing, it's a, you know, number of feet away from the wetland lines. You're not clearing all the way up to the edge of the wetlands.
Correct. That is correct. That that dark gray line is the limit of clearing.
Okay. So, okay, do you think?
Yeah.
I don't think there's much else you can do.
No.
And you're not in the wetlands, so.
Agreed.
Okay. Far enough away.
I move that we accept the application. Megan Miller for 357 West Pearl Road, map 246, block 005, lot 057 for grading and construction of footing drain within the upland review area and 4,800 square feet of disturbance within the upland review area for construction of a single family home. Not a significant activity.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hey, motion carries. Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next applicant Ursula Stedman, location 2342 Highland Avenue, lot 105 slash 004 slash 002. Activity jurisdictional determination, construction of a farm pond.
And so I don't know if these are the folks that are joining the meeting remotely, if there's anyone who's representing this application. Hearing, hearing none, I can, I did meet with the property owner on site. And I, you know, after seeing the project relayed to them that I didn't think that they would have to attend because it seemed very straightforward. And I'd be happy to represent, you know, their application as far as a jurisdictional determination goes. I'm going to share my screen. Can everyone see my screen? Randy, can you see this?
Yep, I can see it.
Okay. So this is the property at 342 Highland Ave. Large agricultural property in a largely non-agricultural area of town. 26.58 acres. This property was purchased a few years ago in which the owner is establishing a Christmas tree farm and has been working toward that goal for several years. So they're occupying the houses here. And you can see different blocks of trees that they've been installing throughout this area. So there's no actual wetland survey, known wetland survey of the property. If we refer to our state soils map, does indicate that this area is possible or probable wetlands. And I would agree by looking at just the the dark spots on the field there, you can see that there's a lot of water throughout this area and even, you know, up into here possibly. Though there hasn't been a soil scientist. So you can see a couple of activities. So there's the the actual pond itself. They're looking to put that pond in right here, if you can see my cursor. So it's kind of right in the middle of the wetlands there. They had relayed to me that this was because they had actually been looking to drain this area to better suit their Christmas tree viability. And you can see right here, these are all curtain drains. You can see the stone that they laid for them, and they all go into this central pipe here. And they're conveyed by gravity down this direct into that that direction where it disperses. So they received this recommendation from NRCS as an as a possible activity to help dry things up. And it didn't really help to the purposes that they needed. So they want to enhance drainage in that area. And part of that is working with NRCS and installing a pond down here to so the water can be conveyed in that direction. And then once that water is retained there on site, they can use it to irrigate in times of drought for the for the new Christmas tree crop that's going to be kind of expanding in this northerly direction. So to me, given their, you know, you can see right on the map, their their agricultural intent and the fact that they've been building this over a number of years recently, I can kind of go back in time and see how they're kind of have been doing it in blocks over time, pushing out from that initial activity and starting from here when they purchased the property in 2022. So my recommendation is to grant a jurisdictional determination for drainage activities and pond creation in and adjacent to the wetlands for this property.
Which way does the pitch go? If that pond overflows, will it affect that house?
Let's pull up the Sorry, I probably missed that. Tell me if you see contours. Not on here? Contours. Looks like we got 810 there. Looking for a contour.
840 there, so.
Look, I mean, if you've been here, this is Allen Road. So it's like sloping in this way, but it does level out here. And there is a water course you can see to the north here. And all that water kind of comes into that water course there. That's all these little seeps add up to there. So, you know, whether or not the pond itself, you know, would, you know, be built constructively as to not overtop or wash out or something is, you know, not within the question of the jurisdictional determination. Because if, you know, they're basically accepting that liability if they, you know, because it's just, it's, you know, it's an as of right agricultural activity for the pond and draining.
You just accepting or can we grant?
You can, yeah, it's, it's, it's not something, so you're basically just making a motion to determine this activity as of right agricultural, not in need of a permit. And so there wouldn't need to be anything other than that.
I move that we accept the activity presented for Ursula Stedman on 342 Highland Avenue, map 105, lot 004, block 002 for instruction of a farm pond is an as of right agricultural use.
Okay, so we're granting, it's not accepting, right?
Well, it's not granting. It's, it's, you're, you're basically just making, you're determining that it's not within your jurisdiction. It's kind of, there's not really great language to describe it.
All right. Okay, can I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
Hey, motion carries. And next application, Alan Borgesi, location 3651 Torreant Ford Street, lot 253 slash 002 slash 002. Activity building expansion and parking lot construction.
The motion sheet? Do you have?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. That you all know Alan Borgesi, I'm an engineer and I'm chairman of Borgesi Building Engineering Company. A little bit of history. I am partners with Andy Bachman's son. Andy Bachman was the founder of Dymax. And this piece of land is right next to Dymax. His son is actually a college professor in the southern part of the country, I think in Georgia, North Carolina or something. And I went over and talked to the people of Dymax. I want to know their future. They only have a few years left on their lease. And it's a significant building. It's frightening. I think they may leave it 94,000 square feet. And there's a couple of other big buildings in industrial park that have recently, their businesses left. My conversation with them was specifically to find out what their long-term plans were. And I was a little bit amazed in the conversation, finding out their parking lot basically is completely filled and the building is completely active. So during this conversation, I said to them, you know, there's a piece of land next to you that's industrial, it's 3.1 acres. And maybe I should approach the owner and see if he's willing to sell it just for future expansion. They let me know that they weren't ready to make a decision yet on whether they'll stay, expand, have multiple locations. So anything I did was at my own risk. I walked next door and the owner very, I answered the door and he said, you know, I remember you, Alan. You were here like five years ago and you asked me if I wanted to sell the property. And I was ready to, but I'm thinking about doing it now. So we talked a little bit. And I said, you know, I really, really would like this property just to protect my investment in the other building. I don't want Dymax to leave. And it would be bad for Torrens and it'd be worse for Alan Borgesi. So I'm approaching him. The, there's a house on the property and it's also used as a horse barn and horse pasture. And it's really, if you walk by, you'd probably say, gee, it was a nice field. But I just had some lingering concerns about it being a wetland. So you hired Tom. Introduce yourself, please.
Hi, Tom Stansfield, professional soil scientist. I've been mapping wetlands in Connecticut since around 1987. I took a brief hiatus to be deputy director health to Torreant County Health District. And I was chairman of the Goshen Wetlands Commission for 33 years. But I've never stopped working in the wetlands industry. So I've just recently reinstated my business full time. And and Alan approached me to take a look at this particular parcel of land, so.
And Tom disappointed me greatly.
Greatly.
Greatly. He found wetlands on land. And the wetlands is a very interesting wetland. I'll describe it in plain terms. But the property itself, this is 183. And there was a building blocking there. You grasp it, very buttoned, very. And I, Tom went and laid it out for me. This is the building, the Dymax building next door. So it's adjacent to it. And Tom, come to a conclusion what you found out there to what?
I don't know. If you have the opportunity to drive by this, you can see where Alan probably looked out there and said, there's no wetlands out there. The property is virtually completely cleared. It's pasture. It's a horse, it's a horse farm. And if any of you know anything about horses and cows and all those large animals, they compact soil tremendously. They create a lot of internal damage to the soil. So we had to, you know, every flag out there was board specifically because the surface did not look necessarily like a wetland. It's grass, it's mud from the horses, it's all kinds of stuff. We were out there early April, so there's actually some standing water in some of the areas because the compaction of the soil, even in the upland areas, allows for the water to retain in that that upper profile. So it was not a distinct wetland by any particular stretch. But it does qualify in Connecticut as poorly drained soils. And I would have qualified these more as, you know, you may have seen the term disturbed soils or aquents or some, something along those lines, urban land, wetland. This really qualifies as, you know, we've lost all of those features that we look for in wetlands. We're not really renovating any water anymore. It's moving too fast because the compaction in the soils. We don't have any wetland species to speak of in in throughout the whole pasture area. It's monoculture of grass for the for the horses. There's one small pocket over by Dymax that's serving more as a detention retention area. It's a small pocket of depressed area where the water tends to accumulate down there. That did have some wetland species within it, but it's, it's not necessarily what we would, what we're striving to protect here as, as, you know, I'm, I'm big, you know, I, I see the value of wetlands. I do, I do this every day. This is not the wetlands that we're, we're trying to protect. If you understand what I'm trying to say, it's, it's heavily disturbed.
So this is a, I call it a moose, because it's underlying, sometimes it's hard to see these things. And this is the area And this is the area that he surveyed and actually goes right through a building. It starts off here at the road and probably some destruction, but I'm not sure of that. And then interestingly, I know it just started into the Nideck property. And then I dug out the old Nideck drawings. And it's interesting, when I built that ninety-four thousand square feet, about thirty-five thousand square feet of wetland went through the building. I appeared for its warning Wetlands Commission to get permission to not do it, take that wetland away. It actually ended up going to the state level. The state level said it was an approved use that we removed that piece of wetland as well, about thirty-five thousand square feet because the economic benefit was so great, building in ninety-four thousand square feet building. These four feet is also continued down through site over here. And same thing with site, we, we, we on the floor. And here is the Nideck building. This is the protection property and all of this piece of wetland is removed to build this building. Do you see it okay? The site, which is this twenty-one thousand square feet of, of area was also completely destroyed until the partner decided to get in the decision for both the state and, and local jurisdiction set, this was worth doing. I'm, 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 I'm talking last meeting here, I'll, I'll repeat it. I believe one of these periods of time when industry ruling will be back into the United States. And industry had the choice of where to go and there's a lot all the way across the country, all the way across the state and all the way across dirty cities. Torren right now has, I think, is no available in this road, it doesn't go there. I would hate to have Torren and miss something to create factories and jobs. So I'd like to look at each piece of land that we, we might be presented with and understand that sometimes we have to be somewhat flexible to allow industry to come and be able to buy whatever company. And I would just like to say that whether you pass this particular piece of land with our, I'd muck another piece of land into Torren to someone else's. I think we have to be as flexible as we can. Anyway, so go on. On the property development. I'm showing here a potential thing. This being, this being Nideck building, and this being a division to go with the existing piece of land. I'm sure of an interest, more partner, which I desperately need, more building, which I'd like to have that solid and construction with environmental basin, with all the calculations, so it's no increase in runoff. Green into the drainage system is part of Nideck right now. That's a disruption to another wetland that this type of way. This is a conceptual drawing only. My problem is I will not buy this land if I'm not sure that I can develop it. I'm enthusiastic about buying it just because I want to protect my other investment and I want to keep Nideck in Torren. Now, I'm going to say to that, there is a species of wetland that is basically not important, whether that's by any stretch, vegetation-wise, function-wise, and it literally just run off that red shore that's been compacted and staying uses a field for horses for many years. How many years did you say? Before you bought it?
No, it, it was a flower farm.
It was what?
Flower farm.
Oh, was it? Okay. Anyway. So my question to this board is, would you allow me to disturb that evidence, fuck the detention time? Detention time, I have indicated it as, I, I put wetland grasses in there. But understanding that this is not the plan I'm going to build, this is the long-term ability to disturb that and offer this to Nideck when they're leaving over the top here. That's the whole part that's on here.
So if that's not the plan, if you did put a plan forward, would you continue having the water quality basin?
Either way, yes, I would have water quality. All, all the construction we do today always has a detention base, water quality base. Absolutely. And that's the downstream side of the, because you talk about.
I have a question for Mr. Stansfield. So you're saying that the, right now, the wetland doesn't have any visual vegetative characteristics of what you'd see in a wetland ecology. Do the soils function in any way?
They, they do transport water. As does all the surrounding soils. So they're all compact glacial till, so we have a compact basal till about anywhere from twelve to twenty-four inches down. That acts as a barrier to the water moving down through the soil profile and it actually creates a perched water table.
Right.
So what we're seeing in this instance is this water table perching within twelve inches rather than twenty-four inches in, in the Pakistan's and the Woodbridge soils that are, that are a little bit up slope of this. But the compaction has limited the ability of the soil to do any absorption. I, I really think it's more transporting now down towards those lower elevations, which could be done with anything. It doesn't have to be a wet soil.
Okay, so what you're saying is that the first twelve inches of, of that soil has water flowing underground through it?
Certain times of year, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then what happens or what must be done to it in order for a parking lot to go on top and for that to be stable?
More of an engineering question.
Okay.
In, in that situation, most people will do it, strip off all organic material. We will put a good portion layer of gravel in there because we need to have that simply to have the asphalt paving or, or building stand up to test the time. And when we drain it through catch basin to the form of a body. Completely, all the drainage off the building, et cetera.
Okay, so basically all of the water that's moving through there now has to be redirected. And, okay, and does the catch basin have any kind of wetlands value? Like, does it add anything?
All the catch basins we saw today have
Can you say that again?
Is that your question?
Like, what's
It's hard to hear with the mic.
I'm talking, you happen to that.
I mean, all the catch basins we, we have today have a five-foot sump in. But the key here is that all this water from the parking lot goes into our detention basin. It's also a water quality basin with an environmental chamber exiting it. Now, all the calculations for drainage are less than present. We reduced the five-year drainage, ten-year drainage, fifteen and twenty-year. It's all done by computer. I could never do that by hand.
And I will say, actually, just for the record, I did, I, I took a visit to the site with the open, open application. And I did kind of observe the conditions of these wetlands. And I definitely agree in looking at the picture, kind of central part of it, it's definitely like a monoculture of grass, some weeds, right? But, but pretty much just grass. The northern part is, does look like a depression kind of basin. There's an area where there's kind of a little bit of a manure disposal area, and this is just below that area. And then ultimately that kind of seeps through the hillside toward, it looked like there were some yard drains at the base of the industrial building that conveys water right now. So that water kind of seeps, in my estimation, it kind of seeps through the hillside, is picked up by this yard curtain drain thing, and then is, is, you know, discharged at the location that this plan kind of shows roughly. The only thing I dispute is in the southern part, so in the southern part of the mapping area, kind of shown in green here, there's a separate paddock area that looked like it wasn't being grazed as intensively. And I did note the presence of sensitive fern and other wetland indicator species. So I would, and some asters and things like that. So I would, you know, I, I don't think that all of it, I think some of it does have value botanically. And, you know, obviously the wildlife associated with that. But mainly in the southern part of the property.
Can you point to where that would be on the map? With the cursor?
I, I can't really.
Oh, I see. I forgot that it's not. He was fooled.
Yeah, this part.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
You can kind of see the area that's shown as green space anyway.
Okay.
This area here in the
And, and I would agree with it. I was there probably before most of that came out. And there were some, there were some remnants of some sedges there. I, I would, I would qualify and say they're probably struggling. I mean, it's, it's they're in the blazing sun, they're, they're supposed to be understory species and, and they're, it, it's, it's a tough, a tough spot for them. And we are, we are constructing a basin, which we could certainly make some attempts at putting some of those species back in that area. But I agree with you, that's probably the least disturbed of it and it's, yeah, I, I don't, I wouldn't disagree with your statement at all, yep.
But that's, and that, that's all I really noted from, from the visit. I mean, I think Tom can provide better detail as a soil scientist.
Do we have any specific ordinances or anything in the statutes regarding compensatory wetlands?
No, it's, it's been a policy of inland wetlands to do that in the past for other projects, but you're not, you're not constrained by having to have a one-for-one compensatoris, not storage, but compensatory wetland creation. So you're well within your right to grant whatever you like.
Right.
I will, I'll take this point to, I did, I did a memo on this application. I am a little confused with Alan. So Alan, you're saying that this is a concept, but they, they have to be able to approve a plan, like whether or not you do it or not or have to come back. Is that something acceptable? Like if they get a plan that's approved, you come back and revise it, you still have this approved plan that you can, you know,
Well, that's an interesting question for me even, because I think the wetlands approval is good for five years. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
And, and be very candid with you because I might have some concerns here. I might, in the period, in the, in the five-year period, go in there, tear the houses down, strip the area, regrade it, and, and, and develop a detention basin. Because I, I would hate to lose this piece of land. I'm overpaying for land. To be very candid with you, for a piece of raw land, I'm, I'm buying houses. And I don't want to tell the seller that I'm doing this out of pressure of the economic value of that building. I mean, it really is troubling and, and it's even interesting just to chat, all, all of us, we're all human beings. There was disharmony among the, the partners, because there's about eight partners here in this land of whether we should do this or not, but we, we've agreed to do it. But, but I, I really have to have this ready, willing and able to be built on when the, the client is ready and needs it. I've got to have that ready. I can't afford not to. Too much for the investment.
But so, but I mean, they couldn't give you a, they have to give you an approval for an actual plan. Even, so if you, if, if, say they approved this plan as written, that's the approval you have. You can go back and modify it or ask them to change it.
That's what I intend to do.
Okay, I just, I, because I just want to make sure that
We needed something on paper to apply.
Right, that this is, this is the approval, whatever the approval be approved, but, you know, you can come back and modify it or, you know, do whatever, you have to change it and you have a plan that's been approved, which is, you know.
Absolutely, Nathan, thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify for the commission that like, you're going to be approving whatever's in front of us regardless of what might change in the future. But, but I guess I'll just articulate from, from the memo that I did for the, accepting the application. You know, first of all, you know, I do recommend a site visit because of the amount of filling that would be required for this application. This, the, the application itself is specifying a complete filling of state or, you know, commission regulated wetlands. So, you know, my recommendation is to just, just at least see it to know it prior to making that determination. I also do recommend having some compensation wetlands, especially in the southern part of the property in the area already designated as green space. You know, to be conditioned, you know, you could, you could come up with a creative conditioning where, you know, the restoration is, is, is designed later or has some standards to it, you know, that, that's something that's acceptable. But I do think that there, there should be at least some compensation for the wetlands there. And if the basin is part of it, I think that's fine. There's basin mixes that have wetland species in there. I think that's perfectly acceptable.
Yeah, that's one of the things I was trying to figure out is whether the basin could be some form of compensatory well and
And then the fi, the final note I'll just say is that, you know, I do, I, based on the filling required for this, I do recommend a public hearing. Because it's, you know, the, the standards at which you're, you have to assess to set a public hearing or not. I can go over them all. They're, they're specified in my memo, but they include things like, you know, any, there should be a meeting or a, a public hearing scheduled, that there's any active deposition or removal of material which will have a substantial effect on the wetlands or water courses. You know, that doesn't speak to their condition. It just says, is there going to be filling within a wetland? And all the other conditions kind of get to the same point. Is there a significant impact to the wetland? Doesn't hamstring you to, you can still approve the permit, but, you know, it's, it, it, it allows the public to come in and it allows, you know, alternatives to be explored that maybe where there can be a meeting in the middle to make the project work. So that's just a summary of the memo.
I have a question for you, Nate. This, this would have to go through a site plan approval with the planning and zoning as well, right?
Correct.
And there are landscaping requirements?
Correct.
For them?
Yeah.
Okay. So in terms of, I'm asking Mr. Borgesi, in terms of the landscaping that you have to do, wetlands, trees and plants aren't significantly more expensive than any other tree or plant, right?
You know, some of, this is unusual in, in the way we're presenting this, and I understand it. Somehow I doubt exactly this is going to be built. I didn't intend to. And I don't intend to at this point unless things change, you go to planning and zoning for any approvals, because I'm not sure if the driveway will be there. And to go through the process of doing that is utility, pure, pure fertility. The, the key here is to allow me to know that this land is developable, that I can in the next four years, regrade that wetlands area that was shown on the thing and know that I can proceed and then go to planning and zoning with the final plan. They may make a larger building, they may make only parking lot, I don't know. Because I have no idea what the tenants' needs are going to be in two years.
I, I understand that. I'm just saying that when you that, you know, you, that part of this whole process, you're going to have to go through planning and zoning and they're going to require a certain amount of landscaping and that.
To answer your question, no, the, the, the plant species are not particularly more expensive. We may have to go to a different nursery.
It's not a hardship to, if there's an area, you know, around the perimeter of the parking lot that, that
I mean, we'd have to come up with a planted plan anyhow and to put in, you know, to seed a certain number of species so that they would spread and become what you're looking for.
Yeah.
It isn't particularly more expensive necess, it is, because they're specialty plants, but we're not talking, they are obtainable, they're obtainable within Connecticut.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I guess, I guess I'll just add to that, because I, I don't know if this is where you're getting with that comment, but if you, if you look at the, I'm going to use my remote control here. Is it going to let me go any further? Not really, no. Okay.
Uh-oh.
Ours fell asleep, so we can't. Oh, there it goes. Here, I'll point to it. So, manual.
So there's a wetland right here.
Yep.
This is the property boundary, because I do landscaping review for planning and zoning. You need, in the ten-foot buffer, you need to have some kind of landscaping. Every forty feet, they have a continuous tray with five shrubs. At a minimum, this area here, if you put a red maple tree here
Yeah.
five plethora of alufolia.
Right, iOS globra, whatever you want, yeah.
That is perfectly acceptable for planning and zoning.
Yeah.
To be, you know, so there's, there's ways to
to do a restoration, I think that, that maybe the commission can, it doesn't have to be to the level of, you know, bringing in native soil and having matching genotypes and stuff like that. I, I don't mean to speak for the commission, I'm just
No, that was, yes, thank you. That was a helpful explanation. That's kind of where I'm
I will say something else, too. We did a lot of buildings in this industrial park, almost all of them. And I think everybody here realizes I tried to do a good job on all of them.
All right.
Any other questions? No, no questions.
Okay.
Motion.
Move that we accept the application by Alan Borgesi for thirty-six fifty-one Torren Ford Street, map two fifty-three, lot zero zero two, block zero zero two for industrial building expansion and parking lot in the wetlands. And that this proposed project is a significant activity and as such requires a public hearing for the application. And I suggest we do, schedule a site walk for the, for the property. And I suggest we do, uh, schedule a site walk for the, for the property. And that part of the, any, any kind of amendment to this plan, protect some areas of existing wetland soils outside of the parking area and expand where possible and the portion of the wetlands in the south of the property. Particularly, and if wetlands are retained or expanded, that boundary should be posted.
Can I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Randy?
Aye.
Hey, motion carries. Hey, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next is the staff report. Enforcement report for 2904 Winston Road.
Okay, so, um, I, after the last meeting, I think we agreed that I would reach out to Mr. Frigail and, you know, tell him how many, how, how much his wetlands citations had accrued. So this was, this was Frigail paving, work, you know, the permit was revoked, work continues, no new permits have been submitted. So I gave him that assessment. I don't want to say an exact number here, but it was somewhere around $13,000 or something like that. Accruing daily at $150 a day. He got back to me, you know, he was obviously frustrated by that. He's been trying to work with Bill Colby. He's not getting anywhere with that or Bill keeps on promising that it's going to be coming. I told him that he needs to find another consultant if Bill's not going to do it. And I know he has a preference for Bill and they have a working relationship with each other, so it's not unusual. And I, you know, I'm not necessarily thinking that he's trying to, you know, indefinitely stall on this. So what I did was I gave him, what I told him was he had until July 1st to either submit a plan or a permit application, which could be in an early draft form and we can slow walk it like we did with Newfield Road. Or that he show engagement with a new engineer and/or soil scientist. Um, and if he didn't do that, then I would start zoning citations because I have not started zoning citations yet.
But they would be retroactive?
No, they wouldn't. They would be accruing from when I issued them. So they wouldn't be retroactive, but it would be an additional $150 a day in addition to the $100 a day that we have going right now. He called me on Friday and said that Bill was getting ready to work and all that, you know. The deadline still stands, so that'll be the next wetlands meeting. So I'll be able to report to you then whether or not he, you know, what's going on with that. Obviously, the other issue was 516 Mountain Road. We had that lengthy conversation with, with Mr. Mazzarelli. And from my notes, he's going to have one month from the day of today's meeting to furnish proof of engagement with an engineer and a soil scientist. Is that?
The reason why I was a little bit lenient was he really didn't meet, he didn't go to the first meeting because he was locked out.
Right.
He did wait, you know, five to 10 minutes and he didn't get in and then we made the order. So he couldn't really defend himself when he issued the orders. So I tell you, like.
He never, uh, he, he rejected the, uh, the certified mail, by the way. We got that back, yes.
He, he did reject the certified mail, but he, he came to the office and numerous times on the record indicated that he received all communications. I will say, um, yeah, I'm just gonna, I'll proceed with that in mind. What is it? July, um, the next meeting is July 1st, so we won't have an answer, but we will by the, the August meeting. I will also, I mean, I'm not going to send him citations during this period. We'll just wait. Okay. And then as far as agent determinations, uh, 199 Water Street. So this is the, um, the building on the corner of Church and Water Street, uh, where they did the big demolition. So this is just for soil and erosion control adjacent to the Nogentuck River. If you look in there actually, you'll see there's, there's waddles up and silt fence now and it's a little bit in disrepair. But right beyond the tree line, there's all kinds of like old concrete infrastructure, like sluice canals and stuff like that, that I, I don't think that that soil is going anywhere on that site, you know. Even if it gets past the soil erosion controls, you know. It, it, so that I felt like was acceptable as an agent determination. And then 371 Pine Woods Road, this is the, um, the church on the corner of Pine Woods and Torringford Street. If you're familiar, it was like a large kind of, um. Yeah. And so they're doing a complete redesign of their parking area. And there's some fringe wetlands that they're, you know, in the upland review area for. And that, that is it.
Hey, great. I guess that's next is adjournment. I have a motion. I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, thanks, Randy.
Couldn't be there in person. Sorry I was late.
No problem. We appreciate you being here. Yep.
Take care.